We are here for an appeal hearing. And I will open this hearing, the appeal hearing. Ms. Allen Dumas, as referenced in classification, she knows it's dangerous dogs. And I will turn this over to Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Commission, I know that are here, those parties that are here, this is an appeal hearing of Allen Dumas for the classification of dogs as dangerous dogs under your animal control ordinance. Those on the Commission that have not been through one this year before, and it's been a while since we had one. Your ordinance provides that a dog can be classified as a dangerous dog that, and if it meets the definition, which is any dog that has that provocation, inflicting severe injury on a human being or other domestic animals, on public or private property, or aggressively bites or attacks or any dangers to safety of humans or other domestic animals with that provocation. Tonight, the way the hearing will go is that Clyde Jeter will, is the animal control officer, and Mr. Jeter, if I can ask, people said, standing right there on that one chair right there, we'll have to see. Is Mr. Dumas in the room? If he would come forward and back to one of these other chairs. The way we will proceed is, there are some exhibits that Mr. Jeter will need to identify, and we'll get him to members of the Commission to describe for you exactly what he did in his role as animal control officer in classifying of these two animals that were lately owned by Mr. Dumas as dangerous dogs. Mr. Jeter, would you raise your right hand? Mr. Dumas, if you're going to testify, would you raise your right hand? Ms. Cheryl, would you raise your right hand if you're going to testify? Each of you solemnly swear, testify, solemnly swear in a court of honor that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and the truth subject to God in this hearing. And Mr. Jeter, start off, tell the Commission who you, what your name is and what your duty is as animal control officer, county officer.
My name's Clyde Jeter. I'm a county's animal control officer, one from two. And our duties are to, we house nuisance animals, dangerous animals. We pick up strays and file these ordinances that the county set forth for us to go by. We declare animals, and bring them before y'all to these hearings to make sure that, you know, things are done in the proper manner.
Did you have a prepared number of exhibits, or Exhibits A through G, as a part of this appeal hearing tonight?
Yes, sir.
Would you look at Exhibit A and tell the Commission if you received a complaint from someone about an animal that caused, allegedly caused damage to another domestic animal?
Yes, sir. I received a complaint on 11/14/2019 at 9:50 a.m. from Ms. Laura, is it Cheryl?
Cheryl.
Cheryl. That three dogs had killed two of her goats. Actually, they had killed one goat, and one had to be euthanized due to injury. And that, this is the complaint form for that. And what we did was, I actually took the complaint now and the classification was done later, Nick, on the back of this complaint.
Did you go on, if you were looking at your Exhibit A on page three or three, tell the Commission exactly what you did and your investigation and your complaint, so this complaint?
On 11/14/19 at 2:10 p.m., we went to 3999 to talk to the goat's owner, that's Highway 27. She stated to the animal control that a black lab pit bull that comes from Dollar General, a mama dog that has been at Dollar General before, that has, her teeth were hanging like she had had puppies. There were two of the dogs that attacked her goats, and there was another dog that looked similar to the mother dog that was with them. And on 11/15/19, I went down to the Dollar General to try and trap the dogs to see if they could find them. It was negative at that time, they wasn't there. On 11/15/19, Ms. Cheryl called for a follow-up. She, kind of, we had had a conversation when I met her that day at her house. We got a little confused and thinking, and she was thinking the dog had been picked up before by us and taken to the vet because it was hit by a car. We left the dog with the vet, and Mr. Dumas later picked it up. But during that conversation, she was thinking I was going to the vet's office to get the information about the actual dog, which I was going there to pick up some cats we had stayed. But at a later date, I had tried to get that information, which was like 11/11:15, and the vets told me I had to have a written request for that information, I guess due to hippo laws or something. So I had talked to Ms. Nancy about it, about doing a letter for them, and we didn't really have enough information to actually get the information. So on 11/15/19, around 2:30, I went from door to door on 27 there and found Mr. Dumas' home at 4390 Georgia Highway 27, and I talked to him. It's on page two, report. Went around, I went around the circle after that to try and find a black dog to see where, you know, he was at. And I had negative contact with that dog for, I would say, over a week, week and a half, like somebody just disappeared.
Did you find any of these two, any animals there that supposedly were involved in this incident?
From the description, they sounded, it sounded like the two dogs Mr. Dumas had, the mother dog, she does hang out over at Dollar General, and she had a puppy that was hers that hangs out with her. I don't know if at the time it happened and all, if the second, the smaller dog was injured or not, but Mr. Dumas had stated to me that the dog had a dislocated hip. He didn't know if, you know, if it had been hit by a car, or what had happened to it.
Now, the dogs that, did you see the goats that were, had been injured?
No, sir.
You did not?
I did actually see where they were at, but they were gone.
Were they in a fenced area?
Yes, sir.
They weren't running for it?
No, sir.
Did Mr. Dumas, what was his reaction when you approached him about the two dogs?
He wasn't sure that if it was his dog, because he said that his dog, I had explained to him that the dogs had blood on them, and he, and I asked him if that date in question, if his dogs had been gone, he stated that they had, and that, but when they came home, that either they didn't have any blood or anything on them. So...
All right, did you identify, any of the, any of the dogs, see them at Mr. Dumas' house?
They were in the backyard. I didn't, I didn't lay eyes, they were, they were like pinned up in his backyard.
Did you, what actions did you take after you talked to Mr. Dumas?
We actually, we were trying to catch the other dog, and also, we had declared the dogs to be dangerous because of the fact that they had actually killed an animal and caused one had to be euthanized.
All right, and would you look at Exhibit, I believe Exhibit Three, Exhibit B? Now, what is Exhibit B?
That's a classification of dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs.
And what, does it identify the owner of those dogs?
Yes, sir.
And who is that?
Mr. Allen Dumas.
And is that the address that you saw him at?
Yes, sir.
What, did the dogs have names?
I believe the puppy's name was Buttercup, and Jasmine was the name of the mother dog.
All right, did, do you know if Mrs. Cheryl came or saw these two dogs after we classified them?
After we classified them?
Yes.
No, sir.
Did you impound them at that point in time?
They were impounded on 11/19.
Okay, and you waited till you impounded them on the 19th?
That's when we did, we did the classification, and after the classification, we had them picked up.
Okay, and what'd you do with them then?
They still at the animal control.
And both, both dogs were still there?
Yes, sir.
And would you describe both of those dogs?
Yes, sir. One's a female, she's a kind of an off brown kind of color. She does have teeth hanging. She's kind of a small dog, maybe forty to fifty pounds, and the puppy is between thirty and forty pounds. She's brown, short. They're both pit bull mixes, or possibly mixes, or either full blooded, I don't know.
How, how far do they, Mr. Dumas, live from Ms. Cheryl, from the goats?
I would say it's probably less than a mile. It's just, maybe even around a quarter mile, maybe a little more.
All right, after that, did you notify, or was Mr. Dumas notified of his appeal rights?
Yes, sir.
And did he request that they, that he be allowed to appeal the classification of these dogs as dangerous dogs?
Yes, sir.
And you're holding those dogs subject to the dangerous dog ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you, could you relate to the Commission exactly what, after they've been, if they've been classified as dangerous dogs, what is required of the owner of the dogs?
He will have to register them as dangerous dog, pay a registration fee, we'll, we'll give him, they'll have to have them inside a kennel that, where they cannot, they'll have to have a fore wing and a top, and they cannot, it's got to be escape route. It will have signs posted on it, you know, dangerous dog signs, and they'll have to have a lock on the gate. The dogs will have to wear ID tags from the county, and also, we microchip them, and they'll wear a special orange collar.
Is Officer Kyle Wiggins here? Ms. Cheryl, would you like to come forward and have to, Chair? Just sitting over next to Mr. Dumas. You've been previously sworn as a witness, is that correct? Could you tell the Commission what, what transpired with your goats and your dogs?
I can. I have copies, pictures of the goats, I have pictures of the aftermath, and I have five copies of my statement here if you need them, and a statement from our vet.
Okay. What, do you, go ahead and tell us what your statement says.
Thank you all for letting me tell my story. On November 13th, I picked my daughter up from school, Creekside, and we come home to check on things and get snacks, and as soon as I got out of the car, I could hear dogs aggressively barking, and they were coming from the corral area. So I told the back guy, I said, "Get in the house." I take off down to the corral, and as I'm running, I can see three dogs surrounding my mother goat, Cookie. And so I grabbed the biggest stick I could get, because I've never had anything like this happen before, so I'm screaming at the dogs, and I'm banging the stick on the gate, trying to get it open as quick as I can, but the black dog, the black lab, takes off immediately, but the two pits are still there. And it's the mother pit with the boobs and the, the baby pit that's always with her, they're always at the dollar store.
How far away is the dollar store from where you live?
A walking distance, it's just right across the creek, right there. And so, as I'm getting in the gate, I, I'm screaming at the two pits, and they are running in a direction of another area of our property. So as they are getting out of my way, and they're not that far away from me, and they're, I'm looking at them, and they have, they have blood all over their head and faces and mouth. But they get to the, another area of the fence, they go up under a fence and get through that area, and they stay there, they don't leave. And then in the meantime, my daughter is coming, and she's hearing me scream, and she's screaming at me, and I'm trying to look around for the rest of our animals. I have another horse and another, another, two, we have three goats and a horse. And so, I could tell that Cookie was injured, but I couldn't tell how much, so I'm just doing circles, trying to find my horse and my other two goats. And at the top of our property, I see my horse and my, and Oreo, my goat, the oldest goat we have, and I see that they're fine, and then I'm trying to strategically look for the baby goat, doe. And as I'm walking around the corral, I see that she's in the, where we feed our animals, she's just laying there, not moving, not, I'm hoping and praying that she's still alive, but as I get closer, I could tell she's dead. Her mouth is just all chewed up, and she's got blood all up under this area and all this area, and the only thing I can think of was the mom was trying to protect her to get the dogs off, and they killed her, and then they went after the mom. And as I got closer to Cookie, she's, her jaw is just ripped, it's just hanging, and there is just blood everywhere. And so I call my husband, and I'm telling him what's going on, because I don't know what to do, I'm just in shock. My daughter is screaming at me, wanting to know if the baby goat is okay, and I said, "No, she's not, she's dead." And she, so I'm trying to do so many things at once, calm my ten-year-old down, check on Cookie, and make sure, and by that time, my horse and my other goat run into the corral, so I closed the gate, and I've got everyone secure, and the dogs are still off to a distance on the other side of the fence, just watching. Tom gets home, and, well, before he gets home, I called my vet, because I'm thinking by the time, I could call my vet and maybe he could save our goat. But then, when I noticed that her jaw is ripped to the point where there's no, you know, she just couldn't survive that, I called him back and I said, "You might as well come here and just put her down, there's no way we can save her." And I said, "I don't know what to do." I said, "What do I need to do?" And he advised that I should call the sheriff and file a report. So that's what I did, and Sheriff Williams came to the house. I gave him my statement, told him what happened. I even informed him that on October 8th, my daughter called me that morning, she was on her way to work, and my parents and I, we, they're my neighbors, so we share driveways, and my daughter was leaving for work on October 8th, that morning, and said, "Mom, there is a pit mother bull out here in Memos front yard, what do I need to do with her?" And I said, "Well, hang tight, I'll be there in just a minute." Not knowing, I said, "Well, when she told me that," I said, "Well, that's that dog that hangs out at the dollar store." And so by the time I got to where she said that a gentleman, a black gentleman, came up in a truck and met her in the driveway and said, "That's my dog." And she said, "Oh, do you live close by?" And he said, "Yeah, right over there, I got trackers on her," so that's where I, how I knew that. So I had given that information too, not knowing who the owner was.
Was that him?
So that was October 8th, when that dog was on my parents' property, which is adjacent to our property.
That one, before this incident?
Yeah, before this incident. And then even two weeks prior to that, I was on 315 getting ready to turn on 27, and I saw the mother pit bull crossing 27, coming to the dollar store. And they're all on Facebook, I mean, and this, this was just horrific. My daughter has been in a panic before the dogs were picked up, whenever Bit picked them up. We were, she was constantly hearing dogs, and she's going, "Mom, we need to go check on the other animals." So we were going out there constantly, all the time, checking on the animals. It's somewhat easier now that we know that the dogs are not out roaming around, but if they were to go back, if you change the classification, and I just don't feel safe. And I mean, and if they, I don't want to lose the other two animals I have, and I don't want to have any of us injured. I don't want them to attack us.
All right, Mr. Dumas, you got any questions, Ms. Cheryl?
Yes, what's she saying about?
No, if you've got a question, I'm going to give you a chance to testify in a minute. If you have a question you want to ask her, you can ask her now.
Did you see?
I saw your dogs. I was there.
Wait, wait, just a minute, let him finish his question first.
What I want to ask is, did you have pictures, did you see my dog bite and kill the baby goat?
No, I do not have that. She was already dead. They were surrounded, they, the three dogs had my black goat surrounded, all three of them.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that Jasmine or Buttercup both of them can't kill.
They had blood on them.
Okay, I asked Mr. Jeter, when he came to the house, to come back there and look at my dog, and see if they had blood. I got pictures of them, they didn't have no blood on them at all.
Well, that happened at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Wait, 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 just a minute. I'll, I'll give, I'm going to give you a chance to testify in a minute. If you have any questions to ask her, any more questions, ask her the question, and then when, when you come to sit, in just a minute, I'm going to let you tell your side of the story, okay?
My question is that, did she have pictures of my dog physically biting and killing the baby goat?
Okay, did, do you have any pictures of that whatsoever?
No.
Any, any members of the, of the Commission have any questions, Ms. Cheryl? Mr. Jeter, these Exhibits A through E, are these the entire, constitute the entire file that deals with the classification of this dog as well as the appeal?
Yes, sir. Other than the fact, I've got the paperwork here where we intake, where we do an intake on them when they come into the dog pound, we give them the shots and everything, I just have that paperwork here.
Well, then, Exhibits A through E, which are, and they're, those are all the records and part of your, your investigation, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Your classification?
Yes.
All right, those will be, now, Mr. Dumas, do you have, it's your time, you can introduce, testify, whatever you want to testify to, and introduce any evidence that you wish to testify to, photographs or anything of that nature?
I have pictures of the dog, it's on my phone. But my question is that, why the black dog, the black lab that whoever owns it is not here, and they didn't pick the dog up? They already immediately done blame my dog for killing the goat. They got no pictures or nothing showing where my dog had killed the goat. So, the time that she's talking about, when Jasmine were coming across the street, and she said that I met her granddaughter, yes, her, in the driveway, and my dog is vicious, she's sitting there with my dog, and she's so vicious, why didn't it attack her? So that's what she's saying. She done put me out there like on this Facebook chat, like I'm such a bad owner. I had my dog since then, I had him on the collars, Jasmine would slide out of how she was getting out. I blocked the fence up while she was getting out there, where I found out when she was getting out. So what she would do, she would just pull the rope out, the chain, and just slide off of it. I bought probably like five or six harnesses for her. And then again, they already made, Clyde, they made an assumption that my dog is the only one that killed the goats. When Jasmine, she made it with that, in the male lab. So I think that's the dog that really went down there, and Jasmine's fault, and what happened was just getting at the goats. But Jasmine is not vicious, Buttercup is not vicious. She explained that they were the problem. She's driving to a T the other day, I forget the lady's name, on the hill, up above Thomas Harris Church. Jasmine went up there, and she kept Jasmine, and she has a pit, and she called me and told me that she's a sweet dog, she didn't get to fight with her pit, her other two dogs or nothing. And she would like to adopt the dog, that's what she told me. She's not here, but I don't think Jasmine killed the goat. I think it's the black lab that's the one. And this whole thing is all about my two dogs, nothing being said about the black lab. And that's the dog to be at the dollar store too. So I just don't think Jasmine did it, or Buttercup, they might have been down there, but I thought they were provoked by the lab.
Okay, you got anything else you want to tell the Commission?
Yes, I'd like to know why, when they picked my dogs up, the investigation was going on then. So they already committed that they were dangerous when the investigation was going That's what, the young lady, it wasn't Clyde that came down there, the young lady that came down there, I asked her why they picked them up, why did they pick the lab up? She said they had it there, it was going to get the lab.
All right, any members of the Commission got any questions or instructions?
So why you have to stop along?
No.
We've already, we've already declared, we're waiting on his appeal.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody got any further questions?
Has the, has your dogs attacked any other animals, small animals, chickens, goats?
This is the first time, she only two years old. She ain't never seen a goat, she ain't never been on a fight or nothing. So that's bringing out the thing that she's not aggressive. And everybody at the dollar store, if she didn't got out, that's why she go, the lady, the manager up there, they seized her, they done seized her. And I took care of my dog, I mean, they can, they've been there in Qatar, I had her chipped, they were taking care of her, I spent a lot of money taking care of her. So she was saying that on Facebook that I'm a bad owner, that I didn't take care of my dog, and they look unfed and everything, that's probably because she had had puppies. And they're saying on Facebook that she had like five or six little, she only had two little. There's a lot of stuff being said about my two dogs and the lab that there, there's a lot going on, that lab is the one that I think provoked all that she fought.
When you brought all the dogs in, did they, are they damaged, did they have any scars? No dried blood on them?
Did they try to fight you, and you tried to bring them me? Were they aggressive toward you or anybody? No.
Sir, he, he didn't bring them, it's the young lady that came to my house.
Sounds like Rob Brown, but I'm not sure she knows.
But I picked, I picked him up, picked her up, when she was hit by a car, she didn't even, I mean, her, like, her back legs messed up or something?
Her shoulder.
Yeah, and she, she didn't give me any problem in trying to bite or anything.
Were there any priors on the other dog that you picked up at a later date? Has that dog been in any issues, fights, anything you have created?
Yes, just bloody people in the hospital.
Ms. Cheryl, you got any questions, or Mr. Dumas?
Well, I want to know why the dogs aren't contained and why they're allowed to run around at the dollar store, just have free range to go wherever they want to go. That shows that you're not responsible with your animals, and that you allow your animals to come onto my private property. And they, the three dogs did attack my goats.
Okay, but you just said you did.
Where you from, that guy?
No. My daughter was not close to your dog, she just stayed in the car, the dog was running around in the front near the road, and she was just watching it.
No, your dog was standing in front of a gray Camaro, and I stopped, and I saw her standing out there with Jasmine.
Is this the day, is this the day the dog?
No, this is another time.
This is another dog, how we, I'm just showing how the dog is always out, roaming, always out, not in, locked up or in their own property.
Anybody got any further, anything for, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, this dog, these, these two dogs have been classified... Ladies and gentlemen of the, uh, commission, this dog, uh, these, these two dogs have been, uh, classified as dangerous dogs, uh, under the, under your ordinance. Uh, there's evidence to indicate that they could be dangerous dogs, and that's what you decide tonight as to whether to uphold the classification by, uh, your animal patrol officer of these two dogs, which are known as, uh, Buttercup and, uh, and Jasmine as being dangerous dogs under the ordinance and require Mr. Dumas, uh, Mr. Dumas to comply with the terms of the ordinance, which requires a registration fee. Uh, it, uh, requires, uh, insurance, uh, that the, uh, insurance policy that would cover the dog, uh, instinctive collar, uh, posting the premises in that the dog cannot be, uh, owned, uh, at, uh, run at large, and they have to be confined, and, uh, and if they're being taken out of the confinement, then they have to be on a, on a, uh, a leash. And then, uh, that is annual, annual care, and have to be there. Uh, it's at this point, uh, that you need to, uh, I'll close the hearing, and then you need to make a decision as to whether to uphold the classification of these two dogs of, by your animal patrol officer, uh, based upon the, uh, what you've heard here and the evidence, uh, and evidence.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tyler. Is there any motion? There is no motion.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
I know it may be too late to ask, but, uh, because I was reading this. The reason I, that we went straight from nothing to dangerous dog instead of going to potentially dangerous is because of the goats being killed. But we don't have, we don't really know if these dogs killed the goat. We actually have the assumption that these dogs killed the goat. I'm not saying they did, I'm not saying they didn't. I'm saying whether it's something.
I think you have some testimony.
Right, and all evidence points to, that's what happened.
Ms. Cheryl said.
Right, that's what they, and all evidence points that way. But nobody actually really saw them do it. So we don't have pictures of none of that. So we just went straight to dangerous dog. We went, if it's a potentially dangerous dog, other than the fee and all that, isn't that about the same thing? Or are there a bigger difference? And I'm asking because I, I, you know...
The only difference is, uh, the fact that the animal was killed. And still, if it's a potentially dangerous dog, it should have to be put in, in the same kennel. Only difference between any of that is being nuisance. A nuisance dog, it adheres to the same standards as a potentially dangerous or dangerous dog.
What happens to a nuisance dog?
Basically, uh, you'll just go through a process, you know, the person, once this happens and all, they, they register them and everything. The dog will have to be kept up because if it happens, something happens again, they get another collar, the fines go up. They got like, you know, you got like three different levels of fines after that. I mean, it can be taken before judge, and they can say, "Look, this is what you gotta do." We can't pretty much do that, you know, to tell somebody your dog's gonna be put down or this or that, the judge will have to do that.
For, for your information, the, the difference between a potentially dangerous dog and the dangerous dog classification is a potential, potentially dangerous dog means a dog with a, a propensity, a known propensity or disposition or tendency to attack unprovoked, uh, to cause injury or threaten, uh, domestic animals with that provocation. Uh, or, uh, when unprovoked bites, uh, a, a domestic animal or chases a, a human being or, uh, or, uh, or terrorizes in, in an apparent attitude, uh, of, of attack. And I think the difference is like, uh, Mr. Jeter said, that, uh, there is evidence that, uh, these two dogs, uh, did in fact, uh, inflict serious injury on, uh, on these, these two dogs.
Now, we don't know which dog killed goats, but dogs run in packs and they feed off each other's favor. We know that. And I would hate to not label these dogs as a dangerous dog. And then next week, those three dogs in a pack hurt a child. It's, you know, it's difficult to say which of the three dogs. But it's also difficult to be wrong about a dog being a dangerous dog. And, and I think that's where our delinquency is, uh, we don't know if the dogs are dangerous or not. But if we say they're not, and we're wrong, then that's, that's on us. We know the three dogs were there when the goats were killed, or they were attacking the goat. You observed them attacking the mother goat or surrounding the goat.
They had her surrounded. She was trying to defend herself behind a, uh, a wooden little fence there, just a, I mean, I've got all the pictures here if you want to see them.
Classifying the dogs dangerous, to me, that means he doesn't lose his dogs, correct? And so, and we're just saying these dogs dangerous, whether you say potentially dangerous or whatever. We have evidence that these dogs ran in a pack and something happened to these goats. So we know that these dogs were around when this happened, because there's no other dogs. Right? You know, right? There's nothing else. So if we're saying they're dangerous, uh, then he has to go through the process with the pen and all of that, and you'll make sure all that happens, but he, he will get his dogs back.
You'll have to pay the, uh, the impound fees and the board and piece.
Right. I'm a big dog lover and I hate to see anybody lose their dog, I mean, any animal for that matter. Uh, so, I mean, as long as we're not talking about him never getting his dogs back.
I make a motion to get the question on the floor that we uphold the consideration of dangerous dog as determined by animal control.
I'll second that.
Okay, yeah, motion second. Almost in place. He's right, he's right. Motion dangerous, so that is upheld, that they are classified as dangerous dogs.
Are they waiting on that for the black dog or for that appeal? Because you do have the black dog also.
He, he's already built his, his kennel, and the dog's already in.
Oh, so he's already complying?
But he's still, even though he hadn't been declared yet, he's already took care of the stiffs.
Okay.
As if it were declared. That way it doesn't get out and found any more problems.
All right, anything else, Mr. Tyler?
That's, uh, that's it. Mr. Uh, Mr. Dumas there is, uh, if you will, do, talk to Mr. Jeter and look under the, uh, Harris County, uh, ordinances, you will see the, your obligations, uh, dealing with, uh, these, your two dogs, which have been classified in the classification appeal.
He'll be sent over with all the information as well?
What?
He'll be sent, I got it.
No, no, it's got to be here.
All right, this here is, is a, uh, we will read your, 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 uh, uh, ready for a question.